Everyone, welcome to the March 23 Committee of the Whole Meeting at 7:16. And my name is Katie Catchman and I call the Committee of the Whole to order. We'll begin with a roll call.
Obi? Ellis?
Yes.
Brantie?
Here.
Gaken?
Yes.
Catchman?
Here.
Lauren?
Sure.
Mackey?
Here.
Morrison?
Here.
Pericini?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Shave?
Here.
Thank you.
Does anyone know how these work? Is this the hearing system?
We do not have any guest speakers this evening, so we will start with Department Head Reports. Y'all look out into Zoom and see if anyone is gonna come up. Turn the camera on for a report. Nope, I'm in chambers.
Okay.
You're up, Chief.
You. Council President Catchman, excuse me. So I, at Council President Catchman's request, and certainly appreciate the opportunity to provide some information in preparation for next week's workshop, we'll be discussing further issues surrounding homelessness and some efforts on the city's part to try to address those challenges. I, you know, I'll share, and perhaps maybe some that I need to apologize for last week. It was a great deal of frustration on my part and the police department's part for sure with the ongoing challenges as it relates. And I think it's important to know this relates to a certain segment of our homeless population. We have hundreds into the thousands who are deemed homeless in our city, whether they're with, they're living with relatives, they're what we call couch surfing, living in their vehicles, living in their RVs, or really those who may be living on the streets. Yet there is a certain component, certain segment who unfortunately deal with criminal behavior that is very problematic for businesses and of course for the police department. So I perhaps shared my frustration with the mayor, and I certainly appreciate him along with Council President Catchman and actually Director Lisa Scott of calling a meeting. That meeting was fairly quickly organized for last Friday. And in attendance to that meeting was myself, Mayor Shade, Council President Catchman, Council Members Deanne Shaw, Debbie Ross, Liz Ellis, Debbie Carrington, Tracy Morrison, and as well as Community Development Director Lisa Scott and Code Enforcement Officer Bill Seedor. And so from that meeting, the Council President Catchman wanted me to share kind of a bit of an overview of a little bit of history, if you will, and where we are at today, I guess at least in my opinion. And I think especially so with so many of the council members provide kind of an overview of a bit of history lesson, if you will, for the last few years. I'll tell you, prior to 2019, there were numerous homeless individuals who had established an unsanctioned homeless encampment on the river, street property along the Chavis River. That was very problematic for police. It was not a safe location. There were various structures. There was huge holes that were dug and structures placed on top of them, the shrubbery. It was just not a safe place to be. So when police responded, usually it was a two-person response. When the fire department responded, then often the police would also respond as security, if you will. So that really did drain the resources of the public safety, police, fire, and EMS. In August of 2018, and that was shortly after I became chief, the city had moved forward with purchasing that with the idea of closing that river camp down. That fell on the responsibility of the police department and two lawsuits. And nearly a year later, we were able to finally accomplish that. I think most people know that the city had created what is known as TASSL, the Temporary Alternative Shelter Location, which was behind City Hall. The idea for that was, the city was looking to move toward a model similar to that of the city of Olympia, where we would have a managed and sanctioned tent city, if you will, TASSL. And then I believe the next effort was to look at kind of transitional housing with the hope to get people into treatment, get them to be productive members of society and be one of the can to try to help that cause. It's, that didn't happen, and I think part of that was driven because we did not get financial assistance. That we, the city of Aberdeen, it fell on the taxpayers of Aberdeen, and we did not get assistance beyond that. And so in, in 2019, July 2019, TASSL was started, was expected to be temporary, as I share. And it was initially set up for community development to manage that. But to be frank, that was just too big of a request for a small agency, small department rather. And so Public Works later took that over in primarily from the standpoint of trying to keep it as clean as we possibly could. City Council changed direction and decided not to pursue the permanent location. Eventually voted to close TASSL. And again, this was driven with, with not having outside resources to assist us. A council approved the closure of TASSL in early 2020, but given the pandemic and the governor's order, the closure could not be commenced until July of 2021. And then our ordinance had to be updated so we could properly close that down. The police department finding closed TASSL, I think as most people know, in February, and Public Works cleaned it up. It seems now, though, that the management of the homeless situation in our community has fallen on the police department. I'll continue. And Public Works, which has dedicated
Keep going.
which has dedicated a full-time employee to be in charge of the cleanup. This is not sustainable or cost-effective. Currently, the city's position is not to have sanctioned locations, but instead provide a map with numerous yellow areas throughout our downtown area where the homeless can be when there is no available bed space available. And that's key because the bed space is a legal parameter through the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, through the Marky Voicing decision. Basically, public entities cannot outlaw homelessness. So when there are no available bed spaces in the city, then the police department cannot enforce the section of our camping ordinance that is under section four A, the portions of any street right of way that are not expressly reserved for vehicular pedestrian travel. And additionally, we are not able to enforce the sit-apply ordinance if we cannot enforce that portion of the camping ordinance. The cold weather shelter that started in November of 2021 has obviously created many challenges, frustration with the police department in having to deal with that daily, and particularly for the businesses in that immediate area. You know, obviously, the benefits of the cold weather shelter, it is a location for individuals who are unhoused or homeless to get out of the elements. And it is also considered available bed space. But the important thing on that is it is pretty much near capacity every night. So therefore, we are limited in our ability to enforce the camping and sit-apply ordinances. So there are many factors that the committee that is being created on homelessness that will need to evaluate. You know, one question I didn't know many people asked me as well. Why does it seem like more and more individuals are in our community who are experiencing homelessness? I don't have a good picture, obviously, but no doubt the pandemic is playing a huge part in that. Drug addiction certainly fuels criminal activity by many. Many mental health challenges, as was outlined by our Police Navigator last meeting before, later more. State laws, and if I'm gonna be frank, which I think limits accountability of the laws of Marky Voicing, as well as the Homestead Act. And the Homestead Act is another limitation on municipalities when it comes to the homeless in their vehicles or RVs. And it limits our ability, in some cases, to be able to impound them the proper way we normally do. And that often falls on the taxpayers, in this case for the city of Aberdeen, to have to endure the cost of that. And then one of my more recent, I'll say pet peeves of mine, and this has been going on for years, is other municipalities, many in this county, many outside this county, who are dumping their problems inside the city of Aberdeen. I think it was just last week, the deputy chief shared with me, we had a municipality from Pacific County that had caught, if you will, dumping somebody off underneath the overpass. Not that it's illegal, but it's certainly, I question the morality of it because we have, obviously, our own problems, and we can't certainly afford trying to deal with everybody else's. I will share, another factor that I think that the committee needs to take into account is and recognize the amount of resources that the city of Aberdeen offers. And when you look, and we have these packets that we give out, and Cat gives out, and it's very beneficial and informative. But it deals with basic needs and challenges, alcohol treatment, mental health, crisis services, education, employment. And on this particular one, one location with 13 agencies for which you can go inquire about. And of course, Cat is one of the driving forces, and we certainly appreciate the services that they offer. Cat, however, obviously, is in the city of Aberdeen. And then when you go into the resource page, and credit, this is Grayshaw County, but many, many of the facilities are in the city of Aberdeen. We have the only Level Two Trauma Center, that regional health is in the city of Aberdeen, the C-Mark Clinic, Grayshaw County Public Health, the Housing Authority. The list goes on and on when we're talking about bills. We have the Union Gospel Mission, House of Hope, Feed the Hungry, all within the city of Aberdeen. Additional resources, you know, Neighborhood Works, Express Pro, the Public Social and Health Services, CPS. And then when you look at the homeless shelters, we have the Esther House, Faith House, Friendship House, Grayshaw Youth Center, the Cold Weather Shelter, the Union Gospel Mission, all within the city of Aberdeen. And so, you know, obviously, the city of Aberdeen is the largest municipality in the county. We are in excess of 17,000 people now, based on the 2020 census. The second largest population is the city of Hopkum, which is at 8,776, almost double the size of Hopkum. So most other cities don't have nowhere near the resources that we have, and we have the largest businesses that many other cities don't have. So when people want to compare us to Elmen, to Monticeno, or even Hopkum, there are just so many reasons why they just don't compare. All of these things are obviously challenges to a certain extent. And perhaps as a final comment, as it relates to the police departments, I'll share that personally, I'm getting tired. My officers are being pushed to their limits, and I know many other city employees are as well. But as I shared at the last City Council meeting, and make here more information, so I'll actually share this as well. January, we averaged 101 service calls per day. February, we averaged 97 service calls per day. And up to the end of the 21st of this month, we averaged 100.2 service calls per day. Our averages for last July, obviously, which typically are business months, was 92 and 93 respectively. So my staff is just a little overwhelmed at times. And so, hence the reason, as I mentioned earlier, perhaps a bit of an apology to the mayor because when we are being pushed and there's, there's just a lot of activity, and then there's a reference that we're not doing anything or we need to do more. It's, for me personally, it gets a little hard in the stomach. Perhaps it's my nearly 33 years of doing this, and I've been cranky, I don't know. That could possibly be, so. And I'll be frank, my fear is we're gonna lose officers if we don't address this because they certainly can go to other jurisdictions, not have the same level of activity. And to be frank, certainly could get paid more if they want. But that's why we focus so much on hiring kids who grew up here. I can call them kids because most of them are younger than both of my kids with the hope that they're gonna stay here for decades to come because that's where the taxpayers will truly get a return out on our resources. So I'm hopeful that this committee will all be, keep an open mind and come up with some viable solutions to what is most likely problems that will get worse before they get better. You know, in just nine days, April 1st, the Cold Weather Shelter will be closing. I'll be honest, on one hand, I'm happy because we are just overwhelmed with the number of calls. But on the other hand, where are those individuals going to go? I don't know. So I am very thankful that the committee is being informed, looking at these issues that will no doubt, I'm sure, discuss the short-term goals, the long-term goals, develop plans to accomplish those goals, develop a funding source because everything costs money. That there is certainly gonna mitigate the challenges that we as a city face. And I certainly look forward to being a part of that solution and providing some insights and ideas. But it's, I guess I'll go back to the one thing I may comment on. At this point, it appears that the police department is managing the homelessness. It is not working, and we need to find some solution that is more conducive to what we're doing. So with that, I am certainly open to some questions if you'd like.
Yeah, Chief, I just wanted to thank you for the timely update. And I know a lot of this has, the burden has been put on your shoulders. So I'm hopeful with the new committee being formed that some additional electives being involved, as well as city staff and maybe a broader audience will be able to help provide some additional support, ideas, and some plans for next steps. I will open it up to the council if there are any questions or comments for Chief Schumay. All right, thank you. Were there any other department heads that had an update tonight to share? I'm not seeing somebody, somebody else says, wave it off to me. Is that Director Scott?
Yeah.
Hi, Director Scott.
Hi, it is. And I know that we've been referring to a workshop a couple times tonight, and I just wanted to make mention really quick. I think you were gonna bring up the possibility of canceling the meeting on the 30th and scheduling a workshop. In the workshop, we would talk about homelessness and housing, as well as the Gateway Center. I think from 6:00 to 7:00 was proposed, maybe to talk about the Gateway Center and have the consultants come in and update the council. And then from 7:00 to, or from 7:00 to 8:00 to talk about the new committees, establishing the new committee and talking about the homelessness and housing.
Yes, I will jump in on that. This is Katie, and I am going to address the addition of the workshop and the cancellation of the meeting on the 30th. I think the most appropriate time is probably council comment period. So I'll bring it up and make the motion to do that at that time. Thank you. If there are no more Department Head Reports, I'll hand it over to the mayor for any report that he has to do tonight.
Just a couple of quick things. Yesterday, I attended a lunch with the mayor's meeting at the log cabin. And like today, it was fun to see everybody in person. It seemed like it's been forever. And it's really bright to be here in the council chamber, seeing everybody. So yesterday, we, all the mayors were lined up there, and they threw eggs. No, no, we had a good fun time and reported on everything our citizens were involved in. It was a good meeting. Also, a second item that was just recently announced, if you all have already heard, that AGP is going to expand their, their business, that type of port, the big silos and all that. They're gonna expand, and it amounts to about $200 million worth of expansions. So you'd be, but at the same time, I will also bring more rail cars into town, which means all the more important it'll be for us to complete the rail separation project or the assembly. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Shade. I'll hand it over to council members. Are there any council members tonight with non-standing committee reports? Councilwoman Ellis?
Thank you. I just wanted to mention that tomorrow I'll be on a call sponsored by Association of Washington Cities with both Senators Cantwell and Murray. And if I have a chance to advocate for some of our projects, I certainly will.
Any council members else? Anyone else from council tonight? If there's nothing further, then I will adjourn the Committee of the Whole and hand it over to Mayor Shade.
Thank you, Council President Catchman. This is Mayor Shade, and it's Wednesday, March 23rd, 2022, at 7:35 PM. And I called the City Council meeting to order. Are we, oh, let me read this first. Public comments and public hearing comments are included during the Zoom video meetings. The public was notified that if they wish to speak during the meeting, an email will be sent to the city clerk@aberdeenwa.com or you will be given an opportunity for those of you that are here to speak up for you and indicate if you would like to speak and have the clerk read the comment, or if you'd like to speak live. In any case, written comments provided before the meeting have been provided to City Council members and will be read into the record. Deputy City Clerk, will you take a roll call, please?
Yes. Obi? Ellis?
Yes.
Brantie?
Here.
Gaken?
Here.
Catchman?
Here.
Lauren?
Here.
Mackey?
Here.
Morrison?
Here.
Pericini?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Shave?
Here.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is something I'm very happy to be able to do tonight is the flag salute. We've got about done the flag salute two years. The flag is over here, if everybody would join us. Chief Schumay, will you give us some flag salute? I would, please clarify, states of America into the public. Liberty and justice.
Mayor Shade? I would like to make a motion to excuse Marissa Obi from tonight's meeting. I'll second.
Thank you. Motion was made and seconded to excuse Councilmember Obi. Any discussion?
I will say that we did hear from her, and I believe it's a work conflict tonight.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? All favoritists, motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed, motion carries?
And I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting. I'll second.
Motion was made and seconded to approve the minutes of previous meeting. Is there any discussion? See none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mayor, I have a deletion. This is Liz.
One moment.
Put the microphone down or something here, Liz. Thank you. Go ahead, Councilmember Ellis.
Thank you. I move to delete report number six under the Finance Committee Reports from Finance and the Parks Director recommending that the City Council authorize the Parks Director to apply for a Capital Heritage Grant for the 2023 through 2025, funding by any, for a match amount not to exceed 981,000 for the Aberdeen Museum.
Catchman, I'll second.
Motion was made, seconded, if you dive into six in the Finance Department Reports. Any questions? Discussion?
Mayor Shade?
Yes.
I will add that this is going to be reworked slightly and added as an action item for consideration for council at the workshop if the council decides to hold a workshop on the 30th.
Thank you.
It will be addressed on the 30th regardless of workshop or council meeting.
Okay. Anything else? See nothing? All in favor, motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, and I will be deleting. Let's see, what are we? additions or deletions, public comments? I'm gonna open the floor for any public comments that are on the agenda, that are about items on the agenda. If anybody has a comment about an item that's on the agenda, please come up to the podium, or is there anything to read about items on the agenda?
We do have one request for public comment via Zoom regarding an agenda item.
Okay, thank you.
Also, in regards to the removing number six, there's a resolution related to that. So that will go along with your motion, I'm guessing, to remove that item? Do we need to make a second one?
To remove the resolution?
I don't think the resolution would stand without the report, but I don't know if it legally matters.
That's what I was checking. Okay.
There wouldn't be a resolution without the report.
It was stricken along with, okay.
Okay, any items from public comments?
We have Mr. Jason Trout with us. He would like to speak on agenda item regarding fireworks. Go ahead, Mr. Trout.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jason Trout. I'm the Regional Manager for TNT Fireworks. TNT Fireworks sells in 49 states now, and we have many experiences helping municipalities with drought restrictions. The majority of drought are unique based on climate, type of environment the municipality's in. I'm here tonight to ask the council to consider a scientific method to determine whether or not it is safe for fireworks to be sold at a specific time. TNT has worked with several municipalities in the Northwest to use a scientific criterion that the city or fire marshal can measure to determine whether the environment is too dry for fireworks. We were successful in passing the ordinance in Pierce County, as well as in Clark County. Clark County met the drought criteria this past Fourth of July, and no one was able to sell or use fireworks within the county. Obviously detrimental to our sales, but it was the right thing to do. The benefit of having a scientific threshold is that the council doesn't have to act. The mayor doesn't have to act. The fire marshal simply gets indisputable evidence from the Department of the Interior that it is too dry and a ban is enacted. I'm available for any questions. I've emailed you all a letter today, which also included all my contact information. If you did not receive my email, please ask the clerk. She also has my contact information. TNT wants to be a good partner with the city. We want to help the citizens that choose to celebrate the freedoms of the Fourth of July, celebrate them safely, and we're here to help. So please feel free to contact me via email or phone with any questions or comments or anything that I can do to help the city. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Deputy clerk, is there any other?
We have one public comment submitted is not regarding an agenda item.
It does regard it?
Does not.
All right. So is there anyone else in the audience that has an agenda item comment? See none, we'll move on. To the Finance Committee, Committee Chair Report from Councilmember Ellis.
Thank you. Finance Committee met at 6:00 PM this evening. And, and we had some lively discussion around the report and resolution that we're going to revisit at our workshop, if indeed we have a workshop. And we were joined by John Shaw, the Museum Board President. And it was very informative. I won't talk about that too much, but we decided to table that essentially because, one, the match is a whole, the match request is a whole lot of money at 981,000. The museum fund currently has a bit over $500,000 in it. And having a few extra days will give Director Barnum a chance to rework this, and we can look at a smaller grant match ask. So that's what we're doing there. We have no public hearings. I'd like to We have no public hearings. I'd like to call for the approval of expenditures.
Next, ma'am.
Thank you. Motion was made, seconded, to approve the expenditures payroll. Is there any discussion? Under discussion, Councilmember Shaw.
Yes, Mayor. I noticed in going through the vouchers that we, on March 4th, we cut two checks to the Mansfield Association of January and February. And I think that's happened before, and we're going to try and give that on a regular schedule so they can manage their their own operations better. I just was surprised that we'll pay for two months in March, and I'm hoping we can get that back on track.
Yeah, we'll have to look further into what happened. Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Just kidding.
Our roll call, thank you.
Yeah. All right, a motion to approve accounts payable in the total amount of $753,682.97 and payroll in the total amount of $89,618.63. Check numbers 25414 through 25435, 76716 through 76879, and wire 1324. Ellis?
Yes.
Francie?
Yes.
Gaken? Catchman?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Pericini?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
That motion is approved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got a few reports to quickly run through. We have a report from Finance and the Finance Director recommending a time extension be approved for the current IT contracts between Next Level Networks LLC via Amendment Number Four and BGX LLC via Amendment Number Two. I move that we adopt this report.
I second it.
Thank you. Motion was made, seconded, to adopt this report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. The report is adopted.
Thank you. Report from the Finance and the Parks Director recommending that the city council authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with the Aberdeen Girl Scout, uh, Girls Softball Association. I move we adopt this report.
I second it.
Thank you. Motion was made, seconded, to adopt this report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Then we have a report from Finance and the Parks Director recommending the city council authorize the mayor to sign Harbor Youth Soccer Club Agreement. I move we adopt this report.
I second it.
Motion was made, seconded, to adopt this report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. The report is adopted.
We have a report from Finance and the Parks Director recommending that the city council authorize the mayor to sign the National Event Pros Agreement for an amount not to exceed $1,942.9. I move we adopt this report.
I second it.
Motion was made, seconded, to adopt this report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And lastly, we have a report from Finance and the Parks Director recommending that the city council authorize the mayor to sign the Grant Award Agreement Form with Graves Harbor Community Foundation. I move we adopt this report.
Thank you. Motion was made, seconded, to adopt this report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. The report is adopted.
And that's it from Finance for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ellis. Moving on to Public Works Committee Chair Report by Councilmember Shaw.
Thank you, Mayor. Under reports and communications tonight, we have a report from Public Works and the Public Works Director recommending that the mayor be authorized to sign an agreement with Hills Consulting Group to complete the construction management support services in the amount of $107,415. I move we adopt this report.
Second. Motion was made, seconded, to adopt this report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. The report is adopted.
Thank you. Under resolution, at our last meeting, we had the report in support of this resolution, and we discussed that the resolution that was somehow not didn't, wasn't captured on the agenda, so we're going to approve the resolution tonight. We approved the report at our last meeting. So I would ask that a resolution setting the date for a public hearing for April 13, 2022, to consider vacating the unapproved rideaway between Lot 6, Block 1, Harbor Heights, and parcel number 317, I'm gonna do larger, sorry, 317090331000, Section 03 Townships, 77 North Range, 9W-W-N. I move we approve this resolution.
Second. Thank you. Motion was made, seconded, to approve the resolution. Is there any? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. The resolution has been approved.
This will be Resolution Number 202203.
Thank you, and that is everything from Public Works tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Shaw. Moving on to Public Safety Committee, the Chair Report from Councilmember Ross.
Thank you, Mayor Shay. Public Safety met this evening at 6:30 on the 34th. And first from the Aberdeen Police Department. We do have one item on the agenda this evening. And this next item basically so last meeting Navigator Landon Moore referenced an additional person. A joint grant was approved for the Navigator to work in jails. And that's a two-year grant, and it's for program, Graves Harbor County, Graves Harbor County Health Department, down to that reason. And this will be a support person for the jail system in addressing people with issues or transportation or drug treatment, things like that. So that will be a great bandage to our city. And then Chief Schumay made his presentation about the homeless and what we're trying to do to deal with that. There's been a recent rash of malicious business complaints for damaged windows and engine shells. And we are diligently working on investigating that and figuring out what happened. Person's responsible. Also, he reported that month of March, again, I think he mentioned this a little bit ago, they've already had a daily average of 100 calls in a day, and that's just unprecedented. So they're very, very tenuous to to increase. And from the fire chief, he wanted to make this, asked me to make this announcement. This is regarding narcotic overdoses. We have a real issue. Between March 13th and March 18th, the Aberdeen Fire Department responded to seven narcotic overdoses. Each medical incident required multiple doses of Narcan to revive patients who were all respiratory arrest. And it's apparent that these overdoses were related to fentanyl. He went on to report at our public safety meeting that the agents ranged from teenagers to adults, and it was in all kinds of drugs. So people were not expecting this and had very severe reaction. And this is a very concerning for our community. And so we wanted people to be aware, to be careful with using drugs. And he, we also discussed briefly that special agenda item driving the fireworks. So, so we'll move on to our committee report. So I move we adopt the report from Public Safety and the Police Chief recommending that the city council approve the request to purchase a used vehicle for the parking enforcement officer in an amount not to exceed $10,000.
I second.
Thank you. Motion was made, seconded, to adopt the report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. The report is adopted.
Thank you. That's all for Public Safety.
Thank you, Councilmember Ross. Moving on to special agenda items, Council President Catchman.
Yeah, we have a few items tonight from Personnel Committee who met on the 17th. The first report from Personnel and the Human Resources Director recommending that the city council adopt the position and classification of the position of recreation and special events supervisor. I move we accept this report.
Second, Ellis.
Report was, this report was, the motion was made on this report and seconded. All in favor, say. Councilperson Shaw, I'm sorry.
I'm not gonna vote against the motion tonight, but in the future, since the council is approving a job description, could the job description go out with the agenda so that we know exactly what is on there? I trust the Personnel Committee looked at it, but I would have liked to have read it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the report, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The report is adopted.
Item number two is a report from Personnel and the Human Resources Director recommending that the city council adopt the reclassification of Ryan Libby from a wastewater treatment plant operator two to wastewater treatment plant operator three, and I move we accept this report.
Second, Ellis.
Thank you. Motion was made, seconded, to adopt this report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Oh, there, actually, can I add something? I apologize, I wasn't quick enough, but there is good news. This movement in Public Works is, I don't know if everyone is aware, but we lost our wastewater treatment plant manager, but we were able to hire hopefully, I understand. Now, so we're gonna, very, we got very, pretty lucky there, and so all is well at wastewater treatment plant, so.
Somebody that's very knowledgeable and understands our system as well. Thank you. Okay, moving on.
Item number three is a report from the ADHOC Committee on Fireworks. I will defer this to Councilperson Ross, who chaired the committee, if you would like to run through it, ma'am. I think, I think you go for it. Yeah, I appreciate you.
We have a report from the ADHOC Committee on Fireworks recommending that the city council approve the first reading of Amendment, amended Aberdeen Municipal Code 8.04 fireworks to allow for the mayor to declare an emergency ban on discharging fireworks during extreme weather conditions. I move we adopt this report. I second it.
Motion was made, seconded, to adopt this report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The report is adopted. Thank you, Council President Catchman.
With the ordinance, you have one more.
Oh, you have one more item, something.
Let's take it, okay.
So we have the first reading of bill number 2201, and ordinance related to the use of consumer fireworks. Amending Section 8.04.180 of the Aberdeen Municipal Code and adding a new section, 8.04.330, to the Aberdeen Municipal Code and providing an effective date. I move we adopt this ordinance.
Doctor First, first reading.
First reading of the ordinance. I second it.
Thank you. Motion was made, seconded, to approve of the first reading of this ordinance. Is there any discussion?
Are we going to do a public hearing for the second, at the next meeting? Okay, good. Not sure when the next meeting is going to be, so yes, we will have separate reading and public hearing.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. The first reading of bill number 2201 is approved. Next council meeting will be the public hearing on this issue. And that's all. Thank you, Council President Catchman. The next item on the agenda is I'm gonna open the floor and hope you come up to the podium if you have any comments in the public. Do you want to talk about? More of it.
Wait, do you guys want to please, let me read into the record at some point. I'm not really sure how that's done.
Yeah, just pass, pass it up. Bring it around.
Thank you. My name is Sammy.
All right, just a second.
We got lucky enough to be the church where the homeless shelter is right about us. Nobody, you know, even more does. But I just wanted to read some of our Harvard, Harvard Chapel highlights that we did this in November 15th. I have plenty of them. The first one. For four are sex-related. A flasher at the church canopy or window before Wednesday night service. Number two, women getting oral sex for money in the doorway. Number three, John's picking up prostitutes in front of the church. Number four, a man masturbating in the church hallway. That was awesome. Number five, people using church bathrooms to smoke pot and meth during services. Number six, a man started smoking pot in our cover room before Sunday service. Number seven, finding bull syringes while cleaning up in front of the church. Six in two days. Number eight, people smoking meth and pot and heroin and doing ivy drugs in the neck in front of our doors. Assaults. Our outside cleaning person, that guy, has been assaulted three times with a deadly weapon. Our security team is physically and verbally assaulted weekly. I have been physically and verbally assaulted by high and crazy people. Personal safety. Meetings and vital studies are often interrupted by fighting and yelling. Weekly meetings and events held at the church for years have been relocated to private homes for the safety and security of our women and children. Police presence is required for community events using our building. We have always had an open-air policy. Now, with Pastor John's gone, church employees must lock the front door, leaving no detail of the person's entry. Our secretary fears she may be forced to use her legal weapon. We had an amazing number of calls to the Aberdeen Police Department, and you know what? You guys have always shown up within three minutes, and I gotta say, you know, that's a huge blessing when somebody's masturbating on the front door. Anyways, we have, we must hose off human waste in front of the church daily. We've had several cases of vandalism to our church building. We recently had a woman die in one of our doorways. That was like the best thing of all. And then I find out from you guys that it was probably due to the rash of OEs.
Forty seconds.
If you went to the doctor and said you had herpes, then he gave you a month's supply of gift certificates to McDonald's for two Big Macs, large fries, and a milkshake daily for a month. until he'd be sure and come back next month, so he can give you a meds refill, when you think he was compassionate, cruel, or crazy? If you believe addiction is a disease, why aren't we treating it right? Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you. Been a long time since I've seen all your faces, I wish I could see two of your faces to know if you're laughing or what your facial expressions are, but that's cool. I'm not here to bash. I just would like to ask the older men who be age-wise season council members, is what you're doing working? Is it starting to work? I've got to answer that, no, it's not. What, didn't have this until, from the thirteenth to the eighteenth, how many ODs were there? You don't have to answer that. There is a Tuesday in there, free needles. Did those people OD with clean needles in their arms, that's cool, I hope so. You know, I'm a tax-paying citizen, and I just had to do my taxes and pay my bills this month. It's just outrageous. And I'd like to know also, how many man-hours a day are you guys spending on cleaning up the mess down there? Picking up the garbage, cleaning the Santa cans, straightening out. Two days in a row, now I saw a city truck under the bridge. Now, I would like to know, as a tax-paying citizen, do you want me to put my garbage in a can and set it out front for the city to pick it up? Do I put the bags out front without the can, or do I scatter it around on the street? I'm not going to scatter it around the street because I care about the city. I've lived in the city since two thousand and eight, and it's gotten worse and worse and worse, and some of you have been on the council. So it's your fault. Who else are you going to blame? We do need restrooms, but how are you going to manage those restrooms? They have sex in there, they, they clean their needles off with the toilet paper, so that innocent person goes in there and uses that toilet paper, now they've got heroin, fentanyl, whatever else in that toilet paper, that a tourist is going to stop in and use. You know, that's, that's not right. Coming into town today, I go by Burger King.
Thirty-five seconds.
I take a ride on Fuller Way, and there's a girl squatting in the parking lot behind Harvard Toll Rental, peeing. Not the first time this week she's been peeing. We all know who she is, if you'd like to know who she is, get ahold of me and I'll tell you who she is. I've had to go out in the middle of the street and drag her off the street because she's completely high. But, you know, as long as she has those clean needles.
Five seconds. Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up.
My name's Alan Shorter, I live in Aberdeen. Seconded after forty-three years. What I want to address is what the Aberdeen City Charter says about the fire department. And basically, I'm sure you've read that, but it says to organize, establish a fire department and have a paid fire department. I've spent time talking with Chief Hubbard and his assistant, Matt Miller and Hopeman, and Corinne Smith, looking at the RFA. We have a competent fire department here. They're trying to change this, adds a burden to the city residents, I don't believe we can afford that. The people were hired by the city under the hiring system, they receive the salaries, and that fits all that. This is a critical department. They, they need three firemen, and I'm sure they have come and asked, we need three more firemen. And council says, no, I don't know, it's you guys, but somebody has. And they're, they're also getting worked very hard, just like you, few nights. People. The cost, you know, to to go and get a mess, things are about twelve hundred dollars, and they could come up with two hundred dollars. And that's not money, and it's going to decrease over the years, that's going to happen for a long time, because we don't have enough business here. And it's, it's been, I've lived here for forty years, and you see businesses leave, but you don't see any replacements. So I guess to me, the office failed twice, I, I think we need to give that up. And for the city to fund the fire department, what they need and to continue under the state umbrella, otherwise, they have, they have to go out and, and get contracts for HR, IT, all kind of things, there's, there's several more people involved would be involved in the, in the RFA that they feel they need, so I think it's a duplication of services, and I'd like to see you people say, let's keep it within the city and under the city umbrella, as opposed to creating a separate entity. One other thing is that in the six-year plan thing, it also says in there that's
Twenty seconds.
New fire departments would be out of the RFA. Now that there should, there, there could be might, start the state to replace them without creating, putting that under, under the RFA.
Thank you. Anyone else want to come up and comment?
We do.
And you have one to read, okay? Over to your comment.
This is a public comment submitted via email from April O'Bye Bowling. Steve, River Rick, Larry, Leona, Chastity, remember these names when you go to bed tonight. They were someone's dad, brother, uncle, cousin, mom, aunt, sister. This is five people who have passed away from the streets of Aberdeen in the past three months. Yes, they were homeless, however, they were loved. A big thank you to Councilmember Ellis, who is the only one from the city that showed support and sympathy to the family, and she even had gone to some of their memorials. It is sad that not all the council members and the mayor are not as empathetic with human lives as Councilmember Ellis. Submitted via email by April O'Bye. That is all.
Thank you. Moving on to City Council comments, anyone on the City Council? Council President.
Take care of the infamous business that we've practiced so many times in the meeting so far. I would make a motion that we cancel the regularly scheduled council meeting on March thirtieth and replace it with a workshop to begin at six P M. To discuss Gateway Center planning and homeless response for one action item related to the museum for consideration.
Okay, thank you. We're going to have the, the motion, under comments, the motion is to which is something we do quite regularly when we have a text or meeting during the month. To turn it into a workshop or cancel it altogether. And so we're going to have a workshop next Wednesday instead of a council meeting, and we're going to have one action item that we're going to vote on concerning the museum. So that'll all be put out into the public information systems as as normal as we do with the military. Okay. Is there any discussion on the motion? See none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Anything else from the City Council? Any other comments? Well, I'm going to say again.
Councilmember Mackey.
Oh, John Mackey had a comment, go ahead, sir.
Yes, I'm just curious. I remember that the council chamber there is up a riser, is there an ADA rap to get up onto that riser?
No, there's not.
If there was an ADA rap, I'd probably be more inclined to come to a council meeting.
Oh, I'll get right on it.
I just, just let me know, I would like to come too, so.
Okay, sir.
Thank you very much.
Anything else from anyone? So I, I just lastly want to say it really truly is good to see everybody be here in person, see all the audience. This is awesome. I, I will apologize for some of the glitches that we've had. We have a newer, almost new sound system. And now we have a brand-new Zoom system, and it's tied in together. We've experienced a few glitches along the way, trying to keep the two working compatibly, and as you noticed.
Which one that means?
There's one right there. We'll continue to try to work this out, but I think it actually went pretty well, considering. We did try to do a dry room last council meeting, and we, we had some difficulties with the cameras. And we brought the team in, which is very good, that's set up this system of coming here at a moment's notice, trying to help us out if we've got any problems, so I'm sure we'll be getting hold of them again and get this all fixed up, so thank you very much, everyone, for bearing with us in making this, I think, as successful. Return to the City Council Chambers meeting after, it's hard to believe, two years. My goodness. All right, with that, have I mentioned anyone else?
I move we adjourn.
If there's no objection, this meeting is adjourned.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.